A call to order. The date is April 8th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. At this time, I'll do roll call. District 1, District 3.
Present.
District 2, and District 4.
Present.
All right, thank you. And the chair is present. At this time, board members, is there any preliminary items that you would like to discuss for the April 15th, 2025 regular business meeting tonight?
As far as, are you talking about off the agenda here?
Yes, off the agendas. Yes, sir.
No, but I would like to begin to discuss the Delta awardings.
Okay. And would you like to discuss that tonight?
Yes.
All right, and what would you like to discuss?
Basically, how was that award made in lieu of the absence of the knowledge of the Board of Commissioners? You know, I read, I found out by reading a paper hearing, a, an announcement about $16 million awarded to some nonprofits.
Okay.
And my question is, how, why has this been vetted? What's, what's in this agreement? We've seen nothing.
All right, so what we will do, Mr. Davis, is we were going to put it on the agenda tonight, but we didn't know when Delta was going to make the actual announcement. So what we will do is put it on the agenda for the next work session. In between there, we can give you a breakdown and send the board a breakdown of everything that Delta has said that they will do as far as everything for the county and for our municipalities.
Okay. That, I guess that part of that will be fine, but also too, I'd like to know who was in these meetings for this negotiations. Because these negotiations, from what I understood, did start taking place really last summer. And now we get to the last letter that Chairman Turner wrote for that board. We hear nothing until we hear of this agreement, and we've seen nothing. My whole, so for me, I don't even know if legal was there. Was this process vetted through legal? What did legal have to do with it? Who was in, who were in these negotiations? Because I don't feel comfortable, and my whole thing is, is Clayton County made whole for that? What is Delta's future plans and obligations? Is this recurring, or is this sustainable for Clayton County?
Again.
So I have a lot of questions on that.
And again, thank you for those questions. Again, we will be talking about that on an agenda. And also, if you have any questions, you can send them to us in an email, and then we will get back with you to, with you on that. But tonight, we're not prepared to discuss that. So once we get everything together, we will discuss it from there. Thank you. All right, any other questions at this time?
We still on the preliminary agenda items? I have a question for item 36 on the preliminary agenda for the April 15th meeting. There's a board appointment for the Development Authority, but it doesn't list which Development Authority vacancy.
Now I have a different one. Is this, is that item 33?
Item 36 on the updated.
Because mine is different. Let me see, let me make sure I have the, okay, this is all. So you don't have what now?
Oh, I just, I had a question about.
Who's the actual appointee?
Oh, no, um, what was, what vacancy?
Tahija, can you answer that at this time? Do you know what vacancy it is at this time?
I'm not for sure at this time, I'm sorry, no.
She was asking about the development, you said it was the Development Authority?
I don't have it at this time, I don't have it.
Okay, she.
Madam Chair. I'm not sure which agenda Vice Chair has.
Yeah.
But for Development Authority, the two appointments we have would be your appointment.
Okay.
Development Authority appointment for Development Authorities to Chairwoman.
Okay.
Oh, I just, normally appointments are attached to a position, or they're, they're attached to a, to either a vacancy or a reappointment?
Yeah, usually the agenda becomes the cipher between the appointment. So if it says Development Authority, then the appointment that is assigned to, the person's name is usually by it. I don't.
So I have, I have my agenda here. Now, I have it as item 32 and 33.
That is correct.
And so item 32 is you got the VOC Chair for the Metro Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, and then item 33 is the Development Authority, and then also will be Chairwoman Anderson Henry.
That's correct.
So it's on, it's on here.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I had to go through mine. Yep.
I just didn't, is there a vacancy on the Development Authority? I thought we just did those appointments in March.
Well, it's my vacancy that should be available according to what Courtney put on here, so I will fill that seat.
All right.
Thank you. All right, any other questions at this time, board members?
Yes, Finance, for the, I think it's seven or eight budget amendments, can I please have the status of funds from each department before we take the vote on it? Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, did you want to say something? Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and Board. I apologize for stepping in late. Did we talk about the items that need to be removed from the work session for tonight?
You said what now?
The items that need to be removed. Did they talk to you about that?
Oh, what, what they, well, I do have items. You will remove item 3 for the SPOSS?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said also you were going to remove item 8 for the Juvenile Court Budget Amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so therefore, we have 1, we have 2, 4, because I have the old agenda, 5, the quarterly benefits update, 6, the salary paid in lieu of workers, 7, the facilities master plan, 9, Historic Rex Village, and 10, NACO legislative update, and 11 will be the Board of Health. Are there any other additions?
Got it.
Additions to the preliminary agenda?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
He's asking about this agenda.
Understood. And the last thing we had, Madam Chair, was to provide context, the reasons to why the removals as pertaining to the SPOSS that will be provided at the 15th Board Meeting to the Board to give an update, since we have a lot of new members, to give it a sense of how the SPOSS projects have traditionally been vetted. And then as pertains to the item with regard to the budget amendment that Finance, they had an opportunity to speak with Judge Fox about that specifically, so they were able to handle that without that being a work session discussion.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. All right, also, we, back to the preliminary agenda, Commissioner Reeves, you said you had something to add?
Is there still time to update the preliminary, the agenda for the April 15th meeting in minute track?
Yes, ma'am. We get items, especially, you can come, or we can have information added to the agenda at agenda meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
The goal is always try to get it there before 5, so we can actually have it on the agenda, then make any revisions up through the actual posting on Friday.
Okay, I'll, I'll have it ready to add for tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have it ready for tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, any other questions at this time? We will now move into our work session for tonight. The first item is the proposal for a public budget hearing. This is from Commissioner Tasha Allen.
Good evening, everyone. So today, I'm going to address the citizens' concerns of accountability and transparency. I will introduce a proposal for a public budget hearing, allowing the citizens to attend in order to further understanding the budgetary process. So this request was actually from citizens from all districts. While we're on the budget, I'm getting a lot of calls on how does the budget process works. So I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Clayton County advocating for public budget hearings. Go to the next slide. So what does this look like? All department heads and elected officials will present their initial budget requests to the Budget Committee in open sessions that citizens can attend. This creates an opportunity for residents to observe the process early, hear directly from departments and elected officials, and stay informed before the final budget is set. And an example of this will be the Clayton County Performance Review that is held quarterly, where the department heads comes and give updates and talk about their goals and what they have complete. So that would be an example, a visual example of what it would look like. So when would this take place? So the proposal will be next fiscal year. This will give us time to plan the logistics, coordinate with Finance in the Budget Committee. Also, it allow us time to develop materials for public understanding, and also to promote the hearings to ensure a strong attendance. Now, my favorite part, why the change? This change doesn't slow down the process. Instead, it creates an opportunity for residents to hear more about the budget and actively support county efforts. While the budget system may work for us currently, great governments always are always evolving to meet the needs of their community. So by adopting this, it's enhancing our process. We ensure that our government remains transparent, responsive, and connected to the people it serves. So because we're on transparency, we've been promoting transparency, I think this is a great addition. So as elected officials, I feel like sometimes transparency and accountability is used as buzzwords. So this would be a great opportunity to show the citizens of Clayton County that we are transparent, and we're not just saying this to be elected. Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Board members, are there any questions at this time? District 1, District 3, District 2, you got one?
Oh, no, I was just saying, if you can come back to me.
Okay. District 2?
No.
Or District 4?
No.
District 1?
I don't, I think you answered my questions. So this wouldn't take place until the next fiscal year, open to the public. What would the, would the notice for these look similar to notices for, for public here, or for regular board meetings?
Yes, it'll be promoted on social media, county website page, Nextdoor, the whole works.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So being that there are no questions from my colleagues, I, it sounds like we may be passing this. And if not, if you have some reservations, I will urge my colleagues to know that. If you do decide to vote this down, please, please be ready to explain to your citizens of your district or this county why you feel like they should not be included in the budget process. Thank you.
Is this on the agenda for April?
It will be on the agenda to vote on the next board meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. And next, we will have number 2, which is the County Audit Update from C-Suite. And do we have our auditors here tonight? You all can come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Meredith Lipson, I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins CPA firm, and I am the Partner in Charge of the Annual Audit for Clayton County for your fiscal year in June 30, 2000, excuse me, June 30, 2024. So the June 30, 2024 audit was due to be filed with the state December 31st, 2024. It has, however, been delayed due to a number of circumstances. At this point, we did receive the final piece of information we were waiting on this afternoon, and we should be able to release the audit. We plan to release the audit tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you. Board members, are there any questions at this time? I'll start with District 1.
Oh, um, what, um, thank you, that was a very short presentation. Okay, so look forward to receiving that audit document. I just want to confirm, you said that you received all outstanding items that?
We were waiting on a final update from the attorney. We have received all the items we need to be able to issue the audit report. There are a couple of items that, in looking back, we, we were not able to obtain, and the County Finance Director was not able to obtain. However, they did not, they were not material to the financial statements overall, and so therefore, we have moved forward with the issuance, or moving forward with the issuance of the audit.
So what, what items were you waiting for from the Finance Office?
Okay, well, it wasn't from the Finance Office. We were waiting on information pertaining to two bank accounts at the Sheriff's Office.
Yes, hi, Ms. Meredith. We spoke last week, I'm Tasha Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I have several questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, so since 2022, can you tell me how many times has Clayton County missed their December 31st audit deadline?
For all fiscal years.
So 2022, 2023, and 2024?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you please let us know how the extension process works as it relates to grants?
As relates to grants?
Yeah, the grants, so, well, we had a conversation. So I, based on the last board meeting, to get clarity on the audit process of the county, I contacted Mrs. Lipton to get information on why the audit was late. We spoke about the extensions. Can you let the rest of the board know what you told me about the two extensions and how that works?
Sure. So as I mentioned, with, your audit is due six months after the end of your fiscal year, so December 31st for the counties when it was due. You, this, the Georgia Department of Audits will grant you an extension, but they will not grant you an extension two years in a row for the same reason. Now, of course, prior to 2022, we were dealing with a lot of COVID issues, a lot of, a lot of holdups across the country. And so there were extensions granted, open extensions granted. But 2022 through 2024, I believe 2022, if I'm not mistaken, you all were granted an extension. You were not granted an extension in 2023. If you are granted an extension, you have an additional six months to turn it in. So for '23 and '24, you all were not granted an extension, so you are just late. They're not going to come out on January 1st and, and shut you down. You know, they're going to continue on, you know, asking for it. And there will come a point in time where they may withhold grant, grant funds on grants that you all have already been awarded, or they may, you may not be eligible for future grants until you get that audit report in. Again, there's no set time for that. It just kind of, you know, when one of the, the state departments that handles grants starts asking questions, you know, that's when they usually get the ball rolling as far as potentially withholding funding.
Okay, so my next thing, can you explain to, because I'm, I'm going to use the words findings, and, you know, everyday people may not understand what findings are. So maybe this may be a question for Finance. So in my research, she stated, Ms. Lipton here stated that they were waiting on information from the Sheriff's Office, you put it out there. When a department does not submit information on time, or if you say you guys are waiting on, on the external accounts for the Sheriff's Office, it will be placed in a findings. And to be clear, the Sheriff's Office is not the only department that's in findings, because I have the records here from 2021, 2022, and 2023, where it lists, lists several departments in findings, including our own financial departments, failure to reconcile accounts that I mentioned, I saw the Tax Commissioner on here, I saw, you know, certain grants on here. So let's be clear, because there was a misstatement made last week that the Sheriff's Office is the cause of the county not receiving grants, which is false, because there were several audits done here in the past that shows the findings from the Sheriff's Office, and we still receive grant money, even before the current sheriff, the sheriff before, for 2021, '22, 2023, and so forth. So does the findings prevent us from receiving, from doing the audit? So even if you do an audit and you have findings, can we submit that to the state and still receive our grant money?
As far as I am in a way, as far as I am aware, I, I cannot speak for the various grantor agencies as to how they perceive findings.
So I just wanted to make it clear, and for the record, that although there may be findings on the Sheriff's Office, and if any citizens want to see the findings since 2021, we have a list of departments, including our very own financial department here on the findings, that not reconciling accounts on time, not submitting documents on time. So I just thank you for your time, Ms. Lipton, and your conversation with me, and educating me on how the budget process works. And now my next question will be for maybe our county attorney regarding a policy. Thank you, Ms. Lipton, I appreciate you so much.
Okay, is that the other?
Ms. Lipton, you can stay, because I'm, I'm going to be speaking with you next.
Okay, of course.
And then, you, you can hold off for one minute. Ms. Lipton, I.
Well, I want to finish my question, because it all ties together.
Okay.
With the county attorney.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let her finish, that's fine.
Thank you. So how, what would a policy look like in order to assist our financial department with getting all things needed so the audit can be submitted on time? So what would a policy look like to say, hey, before the November deadline, let's say before Thanksgiving, is it a way that we can put a policy in place so all departments can have the paperwork done on time, so our finance department can submit the documents to Ms. Lipton's office by December 31st?
There is already a state law that deals with that.
So.
But I'm, but, go ahead.
So if it's a state law that deals with that, but what's about something internally for us? Because if it's a state law already out there, and we're not, clearly we're not complying with the state law, it needs to be something, in my opinion, and maybe my colleagues would disagree, with something that says, hey, if you don't have this submitted to the finance department on time, you know, like, like, for example, I heard that the Clayton County Board of Health may be one of the departments that may be causing the delay. So if you guys don't have your paperwork on time, then maybe you won't be receiving funds.
Now, that is something that could probably, could possibly be done internally, that I know the commissioners have a block grant that you all do, and let's say there was some, one of the people that have to respond, there was some funding that the board provided to that particular entity. Depending on different factors, I would say, there is a possibility that you could have a policy that says if you don't abide by internal deadlines, it could affect your ability to get funding. Of course, it would be kind of tough to enforce that, let's say, with a constitutional officer, like the county officer, like the Tax Commissioner or the sheriff, because they have statutory and constitutional duties, that you couldn't say, oh, you didn't provide this by November, and therefore, we're not giving you any money.
Freeze. So I'm glad you said that. So you said that, so what's the difference in the vote last week, when the board decided to give the sheriff half of what the finance suggested he needed? So if you're saying that as a constitutional officer, they, we can't say, we're not going to give you the money. So how's this board able to do that? Is there something different?
Well, the difference is that the board gave a budget.
Okay.
And so once the board gives a budget, the board can decide that we're only giving you this budget. If you're asking for more, then they can say, well, we need to see additional information.
Got you, understandable. Okay, okay.
Ms. Meredith, you can come back up. I just, I just want to say, and you, you don't have to come up, I'm just going to say, do y'all need to speak with her, also board members at this time, District 2 or 4? All right, I just want to say that the law is the law, and based on OCGA 36 dash 81 dash 7C, basically, what it states is that we have to do an audit, those audits have to be turned in, and that it is a, our responsibility to make sure that we get these audits in on time. Now, you know, we can compare all of the departments and who didn't do what, when, and where, that has nothing to do with it. The bottom line is, you all have been requesting the audit. We talked about who was holding it up last week, which we said, stated was the sheriff, and those are some of the things that we need to fix, not even, not, not only as, for the sheriff, but as a board. So again, we have a new regime in. We're all new, and we need to move to make, move towards making sure that we have everything turned in on time. That is something, and that is something that we need to make sure that we're telling the people, I mean, the, the departments and everyone like that. I also want to say, at this time, our, when you're, with your findings, when will you be able to bring them back and let the board, when do you all plan on coming back and updating the board on your findings as well?
We can certainly go ahead and schedule something now that we have, you know, the information to be able to release all of our reports.
Yeah.
So whenever you want us to, to come present, it's not something that the commission has normally had done, I guess. You know, we're always glad to come present the audit, but it's not something that we are required to do, and, and the commission in previous years has never, has never asked us to, to present, but we are more than happy to do that.
You definitely, because I want you to also present what some of the findings were and some of the issues that we had. But again, I just want the public to know the law is the law, OCGA 36 dash 81 dash 7, and right here, I have a, a letter from our state representative as well, that also stated that we needed to turn in those funds, and failure to complete the audits is going, is going to result in us having issues as far as getting the finances we need and the things that we need to move the county forward. So again, thank you for your presentation, and again, we're just going to continue to make sure that with this administration, that we make, that we turn the audits in on time. I know for some of our departments, I know for the Health Department, we have someone new coming on. I know for the Tax Commissioner, I don't know what happened with that, but I think she was new coming in as well at that time.
And that's been, that's been resolved.
Yeah, so that's been resolved. So all of those issues have been resolved, but we have to deal with what's going on now. And we can't compare to what happened in the past to what's going on now. We've got, just as Commissioner Allen said, we've got to get it right and make sure that people, that all of our departments are turning things in on time and not holding us up, whether it's the sheriff, whether it's any other department. We're going to make sure that we move this county forward and do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have the audits, the paperwork, if anyone want to see, I had my sister make about five copies, so if anyone want to see, just hit me up in the back.
Yeah, and I also have the paperwork from our state representative, so if you all would like to see this, while I think, while, you know, talking about discussing the, the law and where we need to go, you all are welcome to see this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, actually, hi, I have one more follow-up question. I just wanted to get some clarification. Okay, so you mentioned, or rather, Commissioner Allen mentioned about late audits for multiple years in a row. So one extension was granted, and then the county had several more late audits. But at what point, due to late filing of the audits, does whichever state department?
Department of Audits.
Okay. Well, my question is more around the delay or the denial of grant opportunities. At what point does the, the state of Georgia, at what point do they step in and make any, you know, recommendations or denial of grant opportunities for a county?
I don't have a set date for that, and I don't.
I have, I have a date. There's a date in the letter that says some grants will expire on May 1st, 2025. So time is of the essence. We appreciate your time and attention. We look forward to your completion by May, uh, by May 1st. And so some of those, we will start losing them by then.
But this isn't, this isn't a result of one late audit from, I just, I just want to, I just want to confirm, like, um, for, for late audits, um, any delay or denial in, in a county's eligibility to receive grants, that is a result of multiple?
No, that is a result of one year.
Just one?
The same, the same thing happened a couple of years ago, where it was, it was about the same time that we were trying to get it issued, and there was a letter that came in.
And that's why we received this letter.
And that's why we need a policy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our civil service rule, human resources.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Hambrik, and my Commissioner Tasha Allen. I'm Pam Ambles, your Human Resources Director, also a citizen of District Three. And good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I'm going to be as brief as possible. This is my first, I have two presentations on the agenda as well as the quarterly benefit update, so I will be, try to be as informative as I can, but yet, uh, understanding of time. I want to share my magic number with the Board of Commissioners before I get started, and that magic number is three thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. That is the number of employees that we have here at Clayton County that from a human resources perspective that I am responsible for. My presentation is the proposed civil service rule eleven dot three eleven. Reinstated employees can be and have proven, has proven to be very costly. This speaks to the urgency of training as well as collaborating before the final employment decision is made. Our department heads, they have HR as well as a great legal department that we can collaborate with before the actual decision is made, because once that decision is made, it is thus made. My professional position, I want to be clear with this, is to return the employees to work without negatively impacting the county and the other three thousand five hundred and thirty-seven employees that we have. Proposed civil service rule eleven dot three eleven focuses on fairness for the reinstated employee, the county, the citizens, and our other employees. It is complex, but I'm going to try to be as brief and informative as I can, and the board should have a copy of the proposed rule. I want the citizens to understand that the Civil Service Act of nineteen sixty-three created the civil service, the system of personnel administration for Clayton County government. This is the foundation of everything we do from a personnel administrative, um, perspective. The Civil Service Act brought forth the civil service rules, which governs our system of personnel administration, and every employee of the county falls under that personnel administration. Civil Service Rule Section Eleven governs appeals and grievances. The bottom line is, our civil service protected employees, they can file appeals on adverse employment decisions such as termination, suspensions, and demotions, which goes back to the fact that training and collaboration is extremely important. I want the board and our citizens to understand some of the benefits that the reinstated employee has. Civil Service, uh, provides reinstatements rights to the terminated employees who win their civil service cases. I want to be clear, too, as the secretary for the Civil Service Board, I'm back there with them when they are making these decisions, and they do not make them in vain. They look at every single shred of evidence. It doesn't matter what department it is, what position you hold, they are going to look at the evidence as it's presented to them, which speaks to the importance of documentation and getting it right. Uh, however, what we have found is that the current rules do not provide guidance on several factors that impact reinstatements. We have began to reinstate a number of employees, and this came to light very quickly, that the rules are in place. But, uh, Section Eleven does not have a, does not speak to a lot of the factors that, that, um, impact reinstatements, and that's what I'm going to be sharing with the board this evening. We have a civil service rewrite committee in place, and they have, we diligently draft Rule eleven dot three eleven to be added to the civil service rules to address these factors. Now, um, the Civil Service Board did the Rule eleven point three eleven has been presented to them. They have, they have given me approval to bring it to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. One of the things that you'll see in that proposed rule is eleven dot three eleven A, where a reinstated employee is eligible for the original position that he or she held at the time of termination. If that position doesn't exist, then at least a similar position in the same department, same essential functions, knowledge, skill, abilities, working conditions, pay, and rank. So if the original position, they are entitled to the original position or a similar position. They're also entitled to back pay, and the range of that, the back pay is from the date of termination to the date of the written decision. Now, if the county is ready to move forward and that appellant, uh, requests a continuance, that stops the, the date range of payment right then and there. So if we're ready to move forward, the appellant requests a continuance, it may be another three months before the board hears the case. However, it stops the, the pay range, um, date range stopped right there on the date of that continuance. Their back pay includes COLAs, pay rate adoptions that may have been made by the board in their absence. For example, the board, um, voted a few years ago to, uh, change the pay rate for public safety. So the employees that, that, who were out at that time, when we return them, we have to consider that. Merit increases are not included. We had an appellant who questioned that. Merit increases are not included. That's performance-based, and if you're not here to perform, we can't begin to include that. Annual leave payout that was deducted, we deduct the annual leave payout, but in the same breath, we adjust their annual leave balance. They're also entitled, as you see at eleven dot three eleven C, to leave entitlement. We have to restore their leave banks as if they never left. This is annual, sick, and reserve. Clayton County employees, we earn a hundred and four hours of sick leave each year and a hundred and four hours of annual leave, plus our bonus leave. So if we have a reinstated employee who has been gone for five years, four years, three years, you do the math, there's a lot of leave that we put back, um, in their bank. There are other benefits, pension, we ask that they get in, that they contact the pension administrator, our pension manager. Civil service rulings have no impact on pension. They would have to get with, with, uh, the pension administrator, and she will, you know, let them know what the next steps are. What we have included is healthcare coverage. When an employee loses his job, he is eligible to apply for COBRA. COBRA is one hundred and two percent. Currently, our employees pay seventy-two percent of their premiums. Well, yes, no, they pay twenty-eight percent, I'm sorry. Twenty-eight percent of their premiums, the county pays seventy-two. But when you go on COBRA, you pay the whole one hundred percent plus a two percent administration fee. So we've included, as, as a, a show of fairness, we have included, um, the difference between the regular premiums that they were paying before and what they paid for COBRA if they elected COBRA. The date range of that would be the date of termination to the date of the written decision. Eleven dot three eleven E one talks about returning to work. It is, it is easy when the original position is available. We just simply coordinate with the department head to bring the employee back to work. The situation comes, the, the problems calm, problems calm when there is no position to bring them back to. And that is addressed at eleven dot eleven, uh, three eleven E two, returning to work if that original or similar position is not available. These particular issues are not addressed in the current civil service rules, but we are addressing them here. First of all, there was a question about when do we put them back on the payroll? Well, we put them back on the payroll when they return to work. Work is an exchange for services. If you're not working, then you're, if we're paying you to sit at home, that's not work. In my mind, that's a gift. So we put them back on the payroll when they return to work. There was also no timeframes, uh, within the rules. We've added, uh, a timeframe, and I'll share that with you as well. At eleven dot three eleven E four, return to work if the position is not available within twelve months. What we're proposing to do is to let, to allow the employee to receive twelve months of compensation. Human Resources will diligently work with the department head. That would be a good faith effort to bring them back to work. But at the end of the day, if there is no position to bring them back to, at some point, we do have to have closure. It's not fiscal, it's fiscally, um, sustainable for me to come before this board every time the civil service rules to bring somebody back, asking you all to create a position. So we want to be fair to the reinstated employee. If we have not been able to place them in twelve months, the goal is to, um, give them at twelve months of compensation. Return to work, I've already talked about when placing them back on the payroll. Uh, I've gotten a little bit of pushback from this from one of the attorneys who asked for the, the, uh, documents you all have through the Open Records Act, but I stand by this, the onboarding requirements. If you've gone, been gone from the county a year, two year, three year, I don't know what type of activity you may have gotten involved in. So yes, we are asking that you successfully complete your onboarding, which includes pre-employment activities such as the drug screen and physical, as well as any job-specific testing. If there is an issue, we're going to allow sixty days to cure. Failure to make, failure to cure is going to be deemed a voluntary resignation.
Ms. Ambles, uh, Commissioner-
Yes, Ms. Ambles, on placed on a payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we change or add, wherever it has he, can we put he or she?
We, we, we can. We, we can. I try to do it that way so that it won't be so cumbersome, Commissioner, but we can, yes ma'am.
Well, I know this was written, it's old.
Well, this part is not. Yeah, this part is not, but we can. I think the civil service rewrite committee is using they or their. But yes, ma'am, we can. We can say he or she because it could be either way.
It's in there several times.
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank y'all for using your pronouns.
We, we can.
Or just say the employee.
Okay, I got you, because it could be either way. It's not all he. It could be he and she. Um, and I'm almost at the end. Eleven dot three eleven F. We have ran across a situation or two where you may have an employee who returns to work for the county while they have a pending appeal. Clayton County is one employer, one employer, so what do we do in those instances? I don't think we will see this a lot, but it has happened, and we'd rather have something in place to guide us than to not. Um, if the employee terminates from one depart, is terminated from one, one department, return, uh, returns to work for a second department, and the, and the appeal is pending, what we're going to do as far as calculation of the back pay is the date of termination to the first day of reemployment. If the reemployment rate is lower, then there will be a deferential that's included in the calculation. And if they are re-employed doing a pending appeal, of course, the leave banks and all of that, uh, have to be restored as well. Another thing we looked at is civil service rule nine dot two oh four reductions in force. If a reinstated employee position was eliminated as part of a reduction in workforce, we don't see that a lot. I think I've dealt with that about twice since I've been HR director, then Rule nine dot two oh four, um, applies. So in essence, civil service rule eleven dot three eleven is being presented to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. Civil Service Board has approved for Rule eleven dot three eleven to be presented to the BOC. The rewrite committee continues the work of reviewing and revising the rules, and urgency has, has brought forth the need to move forward with this specific rule. And that's all I have.
All right. Board members, are there any questions at this time? District one?
Director Ambles, I only have one question. It's about the timing for, um, for the, does this policy recommendation need to come before the Board of Commissioners, and what's that timeline for that vote?
I have already ended, uh, entered it as an agenda item for, I think it's the fifteenth board meeting. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. District three?
No questions.
District two?
Yes. I have two questions. Um, one is the annual and sick leave. Is there a max? Because I noticed you said it's a hundred and something hours a year.
Mm-hmm.
So is there, can an employee max out? And if they do, what happens then?
No, ma'am. As long as they are employed by the county commissioner, they will continue to earn the one oh four sick, one oh four annual, and then we have bonus leave. Right now, I've been with the county for twenty-five, getting ready to be twenty-six years. My bonus leave each year is forty-eight hours, because there's a schedule. You don't earn bonus leave your first year, but your second year, you, you, you earn eight hours. Your fourth year, you, you, you earn sixteen, and it goes at that rate until you max out at your bonus leave for forty-eight hours. But that's just continued, that's a benefit that the county employees have. We one oh four sick every year, one oh four annual each year, and then the bonus leave that we earn at, at the time of your anniversary.
Okay, so at the time of departure, or when they leave, or retirement, or whatever, do they get paid for whatever leave they have on record?
If, when they retire, yes, ma'am. When you exit the county, whether it through, whether it's through, uh, retirement or resignation, termination, you are paid for the balance that's in your annual leave account up to three hundred and fifty-six hours. So yes, ma'am.
But you don't get paid for your sick?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Mm-mm.
Okay, and what kind of backlog does the civil service board have right now?
Yes, ma'am. We've made a lot of progress. We really, we really have. I think right now we have about, um, maybe fifty pending cases. Mm-hmm, so we made, we've come a long way.
Okay, so now, if, if the board, civil service board has a, a case or cases that are like six months, eight months, whatever, and a person is, um, reinstated.
Mm-hmm.
So do they go back, all the way back to the time they filed for, uh, pay, retroactive pay, or?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Let's say that an employee is terminated January first of, of twenty twenty-five. Um, and the board does not hear the case until the following year. So we're going to go back to that year and move forward, and that's calculating the back pay, and that is calculating the, the, the leave and all of that that they are entitled to under the rules.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So if they catch up, then we wouldn't have to pay out as much money, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's why, yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's why we are, there were several factors, um, that I think contributed to the extreme backlog. We were having a lot of employees terminated at once. Uh, COVID hit. There was a, uh, legal issue that the civil service board was working through, and I'm not at liberty to talk about that, but just to let the board know. So there, there became a serious backlog. Uh, but you're absolutely right. Once we catch up, it, it'll, it'll reduce. They may not be able to hear cases immediately because there's so many different things that can come up, attorney conflicts, and, and we will have to reschedule the case. Uh, but yes, ma'am, we, we are on the upward trend, but we just want to make sure that we have something in place to guide our actions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
District four?
No questions.
All right, thank you all.
So you got everything. You, you, you also quarterly benefits? Salary paid and loo, come on.
Um, very popular this evening.
You doing quarterly benefits update next, and then safety pay, salary paid and loo, workers comp.
Yes, ma'am. In regards to the quarterly benefits, uh, update, I'm going to bring forth our consultant, um, Mr. Jack Thompson. Also, I want to recognize HR team. Here I have Ms. Noy, Ms. Tony, and Ms. Carol sitting in the back from Human Resources.
Thank you.
May I hand these, hand outside?
Ms. Mayes, can you get those for the board members? Thank you.
Chairwoman, Andrew-
Chairwoman Anderson Henry, Vice Chairwoman Reeves, Commissioners Hambrick, Allen and Davis. Uh, I'm Jack Thompson, Senior Vice President of Marsh McLennan Agency here in Atlanta. And we've had the privilege and responsibility to serve the county for the last four-plus years as your employee benefit consultant. That would be for all of your health and welfare plans for your active employees, as well as for your retirees. And on behalf of Maureen Rosen, Tanisha Gamblin, and Valerie Houghton and our team, as well as Rory Callahan with Brown Financial Group, I'm here today to present to you the first of four installments, our quarterly, uh, update, uh, from our consulting team. I did wanna apologize to you, I won't take you through the details, but the pages in this presentation are upside down. Normally, when you flip them, they're supposed to flow freely. But I felt like I wanted to put the paper in your hand, and between that and the screen, we'll be able to work through that, so I apologize. Um, every Monday morning, when we have a team meeting, uh, we have a positive focus session, and our team members are responsible to bring two positive focuses. One of them is personal, and the other one is professional. And I'm amazed at how much I learn about my team members, about their personal life, but also, we wanna celebrate our successes, because if we don't, nobody else will. And so I thought we would start our meeting today with some positive focuses, progress that we've made. I'm real big on progress, not perfection. Rome wasn't built in a day. And so we always try every single day to get better at what we do. So some of the positive focuses related to Marsh McLennan Agency and your Human Resources Department. The first one is, we recently completed the Aflac special enrollment. Did you guys see the ducks throughout the campus? Um, that was, uh, purposeful. And, um, we really tried to do, uh, raise awareness and increase enthusiasm, um, around the program. And so we had, uh, 28 people who took pictures with the Aflac ducks, and some of them were like two feet tall, and, and other ones were smaller, and if you wanted to take one personally, you could do that as well. There was a drawing for a couple of gas cards that were announced earlier today. But the whole idea is to promote the brand, to get excitement going with your employees. And I can't say enough about your Human Resources team and our partnership with them and working diligently to get the word out. Um, the open enrollment meetings were from March the 4th through, uh, March the 19th. Um, we had nine in-person meetings, and you also had the ability to dial in via Zoom, and I was amazed at how many people actually participated by dialing in. They were here at their desk working, but they took a quick break to dial in. Um, we had, uh, 99 people call in for, uh, counseling sessions with the onsite counselors. They attended every single one of those meetings, although 15 of them were canceled, 84 of them, uh, did actually, um, speak with a counselor, uh, on the phone. So at the end, we had 11% participation in the accident program, 9% participation in the hospital indemnity plan, 11% in critical illness, and 4% in the permanent, uh, term life insurance. And so overall, we felt like we did pretty good, and that program will build momentum, and we'll go through open enrollment next year. And overall, I think that, um, it was a pretty positive experience for everybody. Um, also, we're working to improve the administration with the Alight enrollment system, so, uh, we felt like we made pretty good progress there. Additionally, um, for your Anthem, for your employees that are insured, employees and their dependents, if they're enrolled in the Anthem Plan, we've rolled out, uh, Anthem Total Health Complete. That was effective March the 1st, and this is an enhanced level of, um, member navigation so that we give them, um, a better experience. So, um, the Total Health Complete really improves the way members experience healthcare uh, in that they assign a family advocate, uh, to that member and to their family members. And the advocates work on your behalf to help you navigate the healthcare, uh, system. And it offers a broad range of services, uh, designed to support you throughout the healthcare, uh, journey, whether that's preventative care services or chronic conditions. Um, some examples is that they were, they are able to help you find quality physicians, specialists, and then, uh, facilities as well, uh, all of which, of course, are in-network, and they can actually schedule your appointments for you. They can stay on top of preventative care services and manage chronic conditions. And, um, they can, you can also connect with Anthem's clinical specialist. Generally, this is when you're, you have a more serious healthcare condition, and you need to have a long course of care, um, and so they can work with you to do that. Uh, I think we've all had situations in our past, or maybe have heard of this, where you need to be, uh, pre-approved for, uh, procedure, surgery, and so they can help expedite that as well, as well as understanding your benefits. So member navigation is a service that's generally reserved for much larger organizations. Anthem has brought that down into the middle mark at a thousand or more employees. And so we feel like if you're under the Anthem Plan, you'll notice, um, a better service overall, and, uh, you can call and speak with them, uh, but they would really prefer for you to use the Sydney mobile app, and, um, uh, that is also a great resource as well. But the idea here is to improve, uh, the member experience, uh, as we move along. There are some other things that are coming, and, uh, we'll talk about those at a later date, but we're excited about the progress, uh, there as well. Um, last but not least, your employee assistance plan, uh, renews. And an EAP plan is if you have, uh, uh, conditions that are concerning, uh, whether they're stress, emotional, uh, issues with, uh, um, a, a significant other, a spouse, uh, grief, grieving, then, uh, the employee assistance plan is designed, uh, to help those individuals when, uh, they need it the most. And so, um, you've had this, uh, EAP program, uh, for the last four years, it actually renews in June. And, uh, EverNorth, which is, uh, affiliated with Cigna, has been the provider for that entire period of time. Uh, the rates have remained stable for the last four years, meaning they have not changed. And they're asking for a very modest adjustment, primarily because of inflation. Um, and they're willing to guarantee their fees for an additional two years. So if you look at the overall utilization, it's about 5.8%. And at first blush, you would say, well, that's kind of low. I think the very best I've ever seen is 30%. And so we're gonna work with the HR team, with Edward Lance, to continue to promote this program. Uh, but what I do know, um, is that you had eight crisis calls into, uh, EverNorth. Down in the bottom left-hand corner, uh, there were 277 counseling sessions that were actually completed. That, that was for 52 unique participants. And so they saw the counselor, on average, about five and a half times, um, if they actually engaged in counseling sessions. And so for the people that actually utilized the EAP program, it was pretty well, pretty heavily utilized. However, for the retirees down in the bottom right-hand corner, there was only one retiree that utilized the EAP program in the last 12 months. They had, uh, eight sessions, uh, so the, the adoption rate for your retiree group is, is not as high as we had hoped. Uh, some of the reasons that people were seeing counselors, stress and anxiety was the biggest one, 27%. Uh, marital, uh, or partner issues at 14%, depression at 13, grief and loss, uh, at about 13, and, uh, others were just calling in for information only. Um, so, uh, very much, um, a needed benefit. Um, and so the renewal, you have eight sessions, generally, an EAP program has three. But yours is an enhanced program, it has eight sessions, and it includes reporting. Most EAP programs do not have management reporting, yours does because of the enhanced service. So currently, the fees for this EAP program are about $59,000 a year. The renewal is $61,310, so it's about a $2,300 a year increase. We looked at a number of different, uh, scenarios to reduce the number of, uh, face-to-face visits, and the option that was, uh, uh, recommended is to have five face-to-face visits. That will cover the vast majority of utilization that, uh, you've had over the last year, but it doesn't overpay or, or buy more than what we feel like you really need. And so if you were to reduce the number of, of sessions from eight to five, uh, it would reduce the, uh, annual cost a little bit to $51,767, so that would save about $7,200. Additionally, um, there are 24 employer service hours. So for example, we've had, uh, manager training, uh, to recognize stress in the, in the workplace. Uh, there were some grief counseling, I think there was an incident at Parks and Recreation. And we also look to grow the number of employer service hours as well. So we feel like the five face-to-face visits plus the 24 hours, which is a function of the size of your group, is more custom-fit and, um, would be a little more, uh, appropriate, and save a little bit of money along the way. Um, so we've talked about, um, the information there, and if you can reduce it. The other thing down at the bottom, which is particularly important, is New York Life, in conjunction with EverNorth, that's their EAP partner, allows the county to apply a $2,500 monthly credit for, uh, towards their life and disability invoice to help offset the cost of the EAP plan. So this is a $30,000 a year savings, uh, to the county. And so it, it reduces the, uh, cost of the plan from $61,310 to $31,310. If you accept our recommendation to five visits, it will reduce it from $51,767 to $21,767. Uh, I've not seen another life or disability carrier do this previously. So we feel like this is a great, um, great value for, um, what's actually being paid for. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or comments, uh, around that at all.
Board members, are there any questions at this time? Thank you, you can proceed.
Um, in terms of the retirees, um, they had three face-to-face visits. The cost, the fees annually were about $17,000. Um, that would, um, increase slightly to 17,609. Because there was only one, um, uh, retiree that utilized the plan out of about 1,087 that were eligible, we're gonna recommend that you sunset the plan. These types of counseling services would be covered through their Medicare Advantage plans, and they could seek, uh, treatment there. But we don't feel like the additional $17,000 is a good use of the county's money there, so we would recommend just, uh, allowing it to, to sunset. Um, that's the extent of it, uh, questions, comments, or anything else that I could answer for you at this time?
All right, we'll start with district four.
I have no questions.
District two? District three?
No questions.
Or district one?
I'm good, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
There are presentations.
Next is... Workers' compensation?
I'm gonna, I promise I'll be, uh, quick. I wanna share another number with the board. Clayton County, um, has a gem of a benefit in our salary paid in lieu of compensation. Um, it's a gem. That's, that's all I can say, it is, it is a gem. It is, it goes way above what we are required to do by law, so I'm just gonna jump into it. Uh, outstanding benefit, Clayton County Board of Commissioners implemented a benefit that you will find in very few places, if any, because I've researched and I can't find, uh, I can't find it. And even our loss adjuster cannot find one either. Our salary paid in lieu of comp benefit goes well above and beyond what we are legally mandated to do. Our salary paid in lieu of comp is found within ordinance 2013-159. When you go through my presentation, you'll see that I'm referring to, uh, resolution, but it's not resolution. It's actually ordinance 2013-159, and the board should have a copy of that ordinance. Human Resources is proposing that we maintain this great benefit to our employees, but we are proposing revisions that we believe will save the county money, enhance the benefit, improve administration, the whole nine yards. So the proposed revision, the focus, focus areas are maintain the benefit, reduce cost, curb abuse, because we are very concerned about abuse, ensure uniform application and accountability, ensure clarity. We have, uh, draft a policy that is aligned with the ordinance, and we are establishing and improving the administrative process of the salary paid in lieu of workers' comp. This is, um, once again, a great benefit, but we want to improve upon the work that was started years ago. We've drafted a policy that will guide administration. We're working with IT to develop an automatic work, uh, workflow-driven platform to replace the current manual tedious platform that we are using. Human Resources will host a workers' compensation conference to train our departments on the new policy, if the board approves it, as well as train them on the new administrative process and procedures. We're also gonna do a conference biennially to reinforce and reform our departments. The current ordinance, ordinance, if an employee is injured on the job, we pay them 100% of their compensation. Workers' comp says 66 and two-thirds, and that's all you have to do. But since 2013, we, we provide 100% of that injured sal, uh, injured employee's salary up to a current amount, and we'll go into that in just a moment. Currently, there is no policy to guide the administrative process. We've been using the ordinance, uh, to guide our administration, but we've now drafted a policy to guide that. Human Resources has coordinated with Georgia Administrative Services and our workers' compensation attorney to draft the proposed policy. Currently, once again, no policy exists, but we do have a policy that we're proposing with a clear purpose. And I feel once you have your purpose outlined, everything else is driven by that purpose. So the purpose is to provide a consistent level of income to employees who suffer a workplace injury or illness, as defined by the Georgia workers' compensation laws. The focus is also to return the employee to work as soon as practical by ensuring medical care that we are mandated to do, as well as the financial stability of that injured employee. We are adding a tenure requirement. Currently, there is no tenure requirement. We want eligibility to begin one year after the date of hire. However, we understand that we have crew workers from T and D who are working on the highways. We have our police officers, firefighters. We will waive eligibility for catastrophic cases as defined by the Georgia workers' comp laws. But we are proposing that one-year tenure for participation to allow us to receive some type of return on investment. However, the employees would be eligible for the Georgia workers' comp benefits, or they can use their personal leave if something were to hap, was to happen, uh, within that first year. Compensation provisions, we've established and defined the injury year and the yearly allocations. We have listed regular employees and 24-hour shift personnel. Currently, it's 512 hours for regular employees, 696 for the 24-hour. We are proposing 480 and 576. And this aligns with FMLA, which equates to 12- And this aligns with FMLA, which equates to twelve weeks. Currently, there is, currently, we do the five-twelve and the six-ninety-six, so we're reducing it. Overtime that the employee could have earned is not included in salary in lieu of compensation. We've had, we found that departments are trying to, where they have used overtime in conjunction with salary paid in lieu of workers' comp, which is something that should not be happening. Sick and annual leave will not be used in conjunction with this as well. It is the sal, if you're earning salary paid in lieu of workers' comp. Compensation provisions continued. If there is a change while the employee is on the salary paid in lieu of workers' comp, the employee is, is subject to all compensation rules. Impact on civil service rule five dot four oh eight. While on salary paid in lieu, employees will continue to earn their annual and sick leave as mandated by civil service rule five dot four zero eight. There is currently no penalties. Now, when you're dealing with workers' comp, it is what it is. I'm going to be honest. If it happened on the job, workers' comp expect us to pay. Even if the employees are horsing around, the law pretty much states if it happened on the job, you are responsible. We are, we, we do have some leeway in salary paid in lieu. So we have, we have, we want penalties. We've included penalties for discontinuation. If the employee failed to, fails to keep a doctor's appointment, which they do, the goal is to return the employee to work as soon as possible. If you're not going to the doctor like you're supposed to, then what's that's going to do? That's going to prolong the healing process and the salary paid in lieu benefits. So at, within the policy, and the board should have a copy of that policy as well. If they miss two appointments, that's when we began thinking. If they miss that third appointment, they come off salary paid in lieu, and they go to the Georgia workers' comp benefit. Failure to accept a light-duty assignment. If the doctor says Billy Bob can come back to work in this light-duty assignment, and Billy Bob doesn't want to come back to work, we're going to end salary paid in lieu, and you get the state workers' comp benefit. So cur, currently, no penalties, but we do want to implement those penalties within the policy. Our lost time adjuster in all workers' compensation cases, our lost time adjuster will review, investigate, and render a decision about the compensability of the case in accordance with Georgia workers' compensation laws. Our human resources workers' compensation coordinator, she works in collaboration with the lost time adjuster, and she handle all the internal administration procedures as well. And that person is Victoria Robertson. And I so much appreciate her. And we appreciate you too, Jamie, for working on this, on getting this administrative system automated. Next step for human resources, we do have this listed as an agenda item on the May sixth regular business meeting. We're going to continue to move forward with the administrative changes. We're going to continue to move forward with the workers' comp conference so that we can train and educate our departments. And we are committed to the Biennial Conference to remind and reinforce. And thank you for your time.
Any questions at this time, board members?
Great presentation.
Commissioner Allen?
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer?
I'm not clear. If an employee is on workers' comp and they have leave time. So did you say they can't get paid for both, or they can?
So what we, no ma'am, they can't get paid for both. Commissioner, let me go back to, I think I know the slide. No, I think I passed it.
But they can continue to approve?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-mm. They, yes, ma'am. They are only, to me, this is almost double-dipping. Because first of all, we can't include overtime that you could have earned. That doesn't even make any sense. So we're not, we, we, this practice, this practice right here, this, this is something that just does not make any sense and drain, you know, our resources that the taxpayers are contributing to. So we, that definitely does not make any sense. But we find out that it was happening, which is why we're working on these new administrative procedures to kind of tighten up on some things. And no, ma'am, they should not be using their sick and annual leave in conjunction with the salary paid in lieu of workers' comp. So that's, that one-hundred percent that we're paying them, that is all that they should be getting while they're on this very rich benefit.
I thought we were changing it from the one-hundred percent to another percentage.
No, ma'am. What we're trying, what we want to do, we want to keep, we want to keep the one-hundred percent because that is valuable to the employees. Something you're not going to find anywhere else. But we do want to tighten up on it, and we do want to put different things in place that, that's going to save us some money. Number one, we're establishing the tenure requirement. That's one of the things we're doing, keeping the one-hundred percent. Establishing the tenure requirements, which means if, if you, you have to wait one year before you even qualify to receive this, unless it's a catastrophic situation. Then we're reducing the hours from the five-twelve to the four-eighty, to the six-ninety-six, to the five-seventy-six, which will reduce what we're paying out, but maintaining the benefit. We're also establishing those penalties. So if you, if you don't keep your doctor's appointment, I mean, you're at home. I'm going to be honest, you're at home. If you're receiving salary paid in lieu of comp, you're at home. So what are you doing that you can't get to your doctor's appointments? So after that third, if we make that third appointment, if you don't get that third appoint, don't keep that third appointment, we're going to discontinue it.
Okay.
So those are some of the things. But if we discontinue it, they won't be just left hanging. At that point, they can use the state workers' comp, the sixty-six and two-third, or they can use their personal leave if we were to discontinue the salary paid in lieu.
Okay. Quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
The difference between our comp, workers' comp, and what you say the state workers' comp. Is there a difference? Or when does one kick in and the other one's not, you're not eligible?
Yes, ma'am. If, what, for the sat, for the state mandated benefit, the state says all we have to do is pay that injured employee sixty-six and two-third percent of their salary. Clayton County, since two thousand thirteen, we've gone well beyond what the state said by paying one-hundred percent of their salary for a specific period of time. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Ma.
Ms. Hamels, hold on a second. One more question, and follow-up to Commissioner Hamburg's question. With the let date for the one-year dormant period, are the individuals that are already in the system, are they grandfathered in? So if I'm injured and I've been here for six months, do I have to wait for six more months to be eligible? Or would that be predicated upon effective date that, that wouldn't apply?
So I'm, I believe that we, you know, just to be fair and, you know, to all parties, that we probably would grandfather it in once the, if the board approve it. So we probably, my HR assistant manager, Tony, is here. That's something that we're going to talk about, Tony, where grandfathering the ones who are already here in. That's a great question, see y'all.
Not a problem. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our facilities master plan from the Sizemore Group.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. Chairwoman Anderson Henry, Vice Reeves, and Commissioners Hamburg, Allen, and Davis. It's a pleasure on behalf of Sizemore Group to be here and to have the opportunity to present the facilities master plan for the county. I'm going to think, are we? PowerPoint? Facilities master plan? It's only sixty slides. I promise I will go quickly.
How many is this?
Okay. Good. You should have a handout, and I will move quickly through this. About, almost two years ago, we undertook this. And so tonight, I'm going to walk you a little bit through the process and more the assessment and ultimately the recommendations that are coming out of it. Really, the overall intent has been to give you folks a sound, actionable plan for facilities management that really took into consideration multiple aspects from the use of the facilities, the service delivery, the staffing that you need, and those kinds of things. Input from the departments and constituents came, and you'll see a little bit more about that. The other thing that we did with this is to try to integrate multiple efforts, planning efforts that were happening simultaneously in the region. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as I go through. The approach, the easiest way to understand it, it's kind of a three-step. There is an analysis. And that analysis, I'm going to talk about in a minute, but it took into consideration demographics and the context. It took, took consideration the facilities and the sites, the buildings, the brick and mortar that you think about. And then it took into consideration how you operate, how you function in terms of spaces. So we took all of that information. We went through one round of all of that, came up with projections for what you would need in the future, further tightened those a little bit as we moved forward and had further interviews as well as input. And ultimately, we've come out with strategic options and a list of recommendations from that whole process. And it did include a core group of people that work with us more directly during, you know, the day-to-day process. The extended team, which did include not only the departments, but really the external groups that, you know, encompass those departments. And then the constituents, which ultimately includes you. I think we were here a little bit over a year ago, giving you a preview of the opening of this. And then now we're coming back. But of course, we also got together with your local constituents in about four sets of one, one town hall meeting per. Oh, my goodness. District. So with that, a couple of things that I wanted to highlight about the demographics. First of all, just in terms of population growth and in the next five years and ten years, the growth in the county, the easiest way to remember it is about one percent per year. So in five years, it's about five percent. In ten years, it's about ten percent. The other interesting piece that we did look at is just the household income. And it is noteworthy and something that by comparison to the rest of the metro area, it is a little bit under, which means your population will be depending more and more on the services that you can provide them. We looked at the facilities that you had and actually walked them. At the same time that we were looking at those facilities, we engaged in the first round of interviews with your department heads. And you see them all listed there. And as I said, we had town hall meetings also through each one of the four districts. This is just an example, just to give you an idea of, you know, they were pretty rigorous interviews with your department heads from the bottom up and getting an understanding of how they function. I will highlight in a couple of instances, your units were looking way far out. And even though not all of the recommendations may have come forward, you are being left behind with a plan that has what I call prototypes. The libraries, the police stations, and the fire stations actually have prototypes. So should you elect to proceed with them fifteen, twenty years out? We have already developed kind of a roadmap for you to, how to do that. In this first round, in simple terms, we came out with projections that would have increased your space by about ten percent in the first five years and another ten percent in twenty years. In the, in the next five-year increment, which takes you ten years out. So ten percent, five years, and another ten percent growth. Part of our process was also then to, through those town halls, filter some of the qualitative, not just the quantitative, input and get some overall direction. These were our takeaways in general, yes, consistency in needing some space. But some areas, it really also boils down to perhaps extending your service hours. Senior centers is, is, is one of those where, in general, it's good programming, but extending hours and things like that would be beneficial. Libraries in general just need to recast themselves to serve your folks. And then I'll, I'll highlight that fire and police, you know, their needs are driven, and we'll, we'll talk about this in, in a minute, by location and by how long it takes for people and, and your people, and your folks to reach those that need them. So with those things in mind, we went back and tightened the recommendations, looked at benchmarks across the country that give us tighter guidelines about not only how much space, but where to locate those facilities. And out of that came the foundation for what we recommend in longer terms, which is from the point of view of the libraries, for the time being, the focus should be on renovations and very modest additions. From a location point of view, you are okay. Okay? You will, you need to monitor it as you grow. But at the moment, renovations and additions are going to get you the most bang for the buck, so to speak. When it comes to parks and recreation, this is an interesting one. The bottom line is, do, go ahead, and, and we would recommend a more thorough master plan for parks and recreation. When you look at the ideal in the, in the country, you would need a lot more. The reality is that many counties cannot meet the proportions that the benchmark are, ask for, just purely dedicated for parks and rec. However, if you look at your assets and you think of your open spaces in terms of some of your entities sharing the open spaces, and I'll give you an example. The city of Atlanta has a park that uses land that really is for the, from the waterworks. So if you think of that strategy, that's going to get you what you need in parks and, and recreation. But do, do a master plan. It, it, it's, I think it could be revealing from that point of view. I'm going to move on to the senior centers. I think I already, you know, kind of stated it. The locations are fine. They may need some enhancements and refreshing of the facilities, but not huge expansions or huge, you know, new locations. From the point of view of public safety and those services that must reach your public, it is the police that has the most imminent, if you will, need for a new location. We are recommending close to Lake Spivey. And then the fire, the fire and emergency, they, you have several things already underway that will keep you okay in the foreseeable future. Monitor those also from a locational point of view. You seem to be okay. But as your population grows, this may be another group that will need space coming forward. Finally, we looked at the other administrative services with the lens and the approach that you already have an administrative complex. You have one building under construction, as you well know, over there. You also have a master plan that calls for at least three new potential sites for buildings there, plus an emergency management station there. What we did in this particular case is we looked at the footprints that you had, the three remaining footprints. We took the needs of those units that we felt would, might best position themselves over there, which included central services, community development, tax assessor, and tax commissioner. And we actually are recommending that if you would consider, instead of two-story structures, whoop, didn't mean to do that. Instead of two-story structures, you go to three-story structures. You may be in a position to actually keep open for a while the third footprint. So you don't need to use it. We're actually recommending just two footprints be filled with facilities that would house one central services and the other one, the combination of the tax assessor, community development, and the tax commissioner. That is our recommendation in terms of new construction. It's about just north of one-hundred-and-ten thousand gross square feet. It'd be in the order of magnitude in construction cost of sixty-one million or so, ninety-one in total project cost. We'll talk about that in just a minute. I didn't want to leave these broad recommendations without saying that, of course, there will be some renovations and other things as you come out of buildings, including this one, that you would need to then fund as you go through. The thing coming out of this tighter approach is if you remember that ten percent in five years increase that I told you, we have pared it down to, in the seven percent in each increment. So instead of ten percent in five years, another ten, we're tightening this down in the recommendations at the moment in the neighborhood of seven percent for those. So that's what came in terms of overall recommendation from a quantitative point of view. The last step for us has been to give you a sense of what it will cost in both construction cost and also what we call total project cost. And that includes all the other costs associated, contingencies, professional fees, furnishings, and all of those things. And so we're giving you that information as part of this master plan. If you look in new construction, the administrative complex, and then, of course, the police station. If you look in new construction, the administrative complex, and then of course, the police station would total about 67 in construction cost and about 100 million in total project cost. And then we have taken a first pass at estimating what some of those renovations would look like, which again, are there on the screen. And last but not least, this is our first recommendation pass at how you might organize those in terms of upcoming SPOSS. And with that, I know I went quickly.
You kept our attention. You did an excellent job. Thank you. All right. Board members, are there any questions at this time, District Four? Mr. Davis?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On those costs, were those costs done before tariff implementation or not?
Sir, I have to admit it was before. I'm sorry. But you know, it, things might change. The soft cost does have escalation, but I'm not sure it may cover all.
No, no, I think still is up, what, 30% since inauguration day?
It's a fair question.
Commissioner Hamburg?
No questions.
Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes. That was an incredible presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to confirm. This is, it's a question for you, but it's also a question for our COO about our capital improvements plan. Like this is all of, this is all a part of, of getting to a capital improvement plan for the county. And I wanted to, I know we had an incredible Clayton County Greenway Trail master plan that I think our COO is familiar with, and I'm sure you all referenced it.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Commissioner, a couple of things. Sizmore's done us a phenomenal job in helping provide a comprehensive picture of where we want to head. But you were, you were exactly right, and Commissioner Davis kind of teed it up. So this is kind of the precursor to our upcoming SPOSS 2026. We thought it was important to get you all information about costs, the needs, an assessment. So we're developing the list for contemplation to go on a referendum. Then at least we're having a project list that's representative of what the board thinks are important based upon an assessment that's been done. Conversely, also, as we talked about the park master plan, I think there is a recommendation from the department to update our master plan to not just talk about facilities, but also to talk specifically about the trail development in parks and recreation. So all this ties in. We all recognize all of it is contingent upon money, and we know SPOSS won't carry us so far, but it would certainly help us to develop a priority list on what our needs might be.
But don't forget about our senators. We're not going to ask, they always have monies for parks and rec. And so let's make sure that we're looking to see what they have available.
Yes, ma'am.
We know that times are different, but hey, let's get that money and see what they have available.
That's right.
Oh, you thought, I have more questions?
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. I'm going to keep my question short. It was, I know, I know you had referenced the, the county's, and I apologize, please remind me your name.
Lily. Lily Berrios. Berrios. If you can roll it out.
Okay. Roll it out. Thank you. Um, so, and I guess the question is for the both of you all. Does, does Clayton County, do we have a parks and recreations master plan? Like I referenced the trail plan, you know, under your leadership with Parks and, Parks and Rec. But do we, do we have, like, this is the trail plan. Do we have a parks plan? Do we have one for senior service? Do we have?
Yes, ma'am. So we do have a master's plan for parks and recreation. The last master plan, unfortunately, was 2008. So it needs to be updated. So we really talked about a lot of our infrastructure to build out. A lot of our previous SPOSS programs were a byproduct of some of the recommendations from that. However, it's time to do a re-up, it's time to do an update on that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then Ms. Berrios, you mentioned a park in Atlanta that...
The waterworks, yeah.
Is that the Old Fourth Ward Park?
No, it's actually all the way up north, Howell Mill.
Is that the one, the park, Shirley Franklin? Yeah, it's the Shirley Franklin Park. I think it was the whole.
I guess, yeah, that's been.
Yeah, they just named it after her last week.
Right, right, right. It's right on, on Howell Mill. I, I know it well because I've lived close and always wondered, why was this all fenced in? And so they've opened it up.
She had a vision.
I, she always has.
Yeah, she always has a vision. Yeah, that park was one of her visions, more or less, and they named the park after her last week.
So Madam Chair, if you don't mind, to reiterate the collaboration and some of the things that we are doing, as she talked about in the presentation, we are looking to do some collaborative work with the Water Authority. So we're talking about the Smith River Reservoir, we're talking about the Jim Huey property. There has been these passive opportunities to do outdoor camping, a multitude of things, and doing that in collaboration with the Water Authority to maximize their property and do passive recreational opportunities there. So there has been discussions around that. And this board has been gracious enough to provide some money to the Huey Foundation. I think we provided about $30,000 to $50,000 to kind of help with their archery center and some other things in space. So we've talked about it, but we do need to expand that relationship in a different way.
I just want to see us have an Old Fourth Ward Park with the water basin that, that helps with flooding and retention. That also doubles as a park. That's why I thought you might be referencing it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam.
All right. Any more questions at this time, board members? Thank you.
It's been our honor, our pleasure to work on this and also on the company.
Well, right. Thank you. Next is the Historic Rex Mill Village Small Area Planning Proposal.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Mary Darby. I'm the planning administrator with the Community Development Department under the great leadership of Director Patrick Egeke. And I have the opportunity of presenting to you today the Atlanta Regional Commissioner, Commission Planner, Carrie Stevens. She's the planning administrator and economic development director with ARC. And she's been helping us with the small area plan for Clayton County and the Rex Mill Village area. And it complements our 2039, our adopted 2039 comprehensive plan, small area planning.
Well, good evening, Commissioner and the Board of Commissioners, Chairwoman, excuse me. My name is Carrie Stevens. I am a program manager at the Atlanta Regional Commission. I have been at the Atlanta Regional Commission about five years. Prior to that, I did work in local governments and counties. So this is very close to my heart, doing this type of work. I focused on redevelopment and historic preservation. So this project is especially interesting to me. So what Clayton County came to us at ARC is to build off of, again, your comprehensive plan that you just finished last year and to look at each one of the character areas and look at them more closely to assist with your upcoming zoning rewrite. And so we have worked with, happily worked with the staff significantly over a number of projects, Terra Boulevard, the Eritropolis Blueprint. And we realized that Clayton County is doing a lot of things to move Clayton forward, so I love to use the, the tagline, in that we need...
We, we want you to use that all the time.
Move Clayton forward. So we realized that you're doing a lot of planning work and a lot of important work, and you have a very small staff. So we wanted to move one of our programs forward, and the pilot program is our plan, a planner and residence program. And the staff determined that they really did need help with these character areas. And the first one that we tried, we determined to work on was the Rex Mill Village Arts and Entertainment District. So this is a character area from your comprehensive plan. And we started to work on this small area plan by doing research on the existing conditions and determining next steps. So I'll be giving you an overview of what we've found so far and some of the recommendations that we do have. You will also, for each one of the character areas, we're going to be working on a small area plan, and we've started drafting that. The draft plan will include an introduction, history and existing conditions, the vision for that particular character area, and some recommendations to move it forward. As you can see here on the map, this is the, oop, oop, well, I don't know what I did there. There we go. Thank you. So this is directly from your comprehensive plan. This is the study area. And that's the study area that we're going to be utilizing. Within this, though, you do have one building and an area around it, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, the Rex Mill, the Rex Mill area and the Raceway. This was listed in 1979 and really is the foundation for that particular area. But there's also a lot of buildings that are historic as well and would be eligible for the National Register and make that a really unique area, as well as its location along the creek. So this is just a little bit of the history. I won't read all of the different information on this. This is the air, the years of significance for that particular mill. The picture on the top is directly from that National Register listing. And this is a picture here that I took about maybe two or three months ago. So it hasn't changed all that much, which is really interesting from that National Register nomination. Here's some other existing conditions. And as you can see here, we have the Melvinia Shields Monument, and that's, Michelle Obama is a descendant in this particular area. You also have these two, these two main historic structures that you have here. Those would likely also be eligible for the National Register. And a large particular piece of property that, you can kind of see the mill building in the, in the background, but it's right next to this large piece of property. I did take this photo a number of months ago, and unfortunately, there was a fairly big fire there recently. So the picture is a little bit outdated, but it also is a property that would be possibly a redevelopment area as well. So you can see here on this map, that's where a lot of those buildings are located that we just talked about. And in the pink area here with the red boundary, that's the boundary of that particular character area. So we have here the size of that area consists of about a little less than 17 acres. As I said, there's a significant water feature in that area, which is the Big Cotton Indian Creek. We have the Rex Mill, which is on the National Register, which has a number of other historic resources, also the bridge that's out of operation now, but also a significant resource in the area. It also appears that there are infrastructure amenities there, water and sewer. One of the recommendations that I'll talk about later is kind of looking into what those resources are and the utilities that might be available there. But what we did notice is there is no pedestrian or bike amenities in that area. So I won't read all of this, but I kind of go through the different building type and scale. That would be something if we did determine we'd like to move forward with some kind of a designation, we'd need to know that. Property ownership is a really interesting thing in this particular area. You only have a few property owners. So when you're looking into making those changes, those would be the people that you would engage at that time. And then also, Clayton County actually owns, if you see the pink properties on this map, Clayton County actually owns a significant amount of property in that location. What I think is most significant is the pink property that's along the creek is all owned by Clayton County. And I think we were just talking with Sizmore about needing extra park space, and that would be a great opportunity to enhance that entire area, utilize that as a passive park or trails or things of that nature a little bit more. Planning would need to be done, but if you're going to make this an arts and entertainment district where people are going to be attracted to this area, you have the historic buildings, and you could also utilize those natural features as well. So this is a map of your current zoning. So this is interesting in a way that, as you can see, the red boundary there is the study area. We also looked at, you can see, you can't see quite as well as I'd like to, but there's a circle around a quarter of a mile and a half a mile because there may be opportunities to extend that boundary and that arts and entertainment district. But in the exact area that we're looking at specifically, you have the pink, which is zones general business, and then you have the yellow, which is zone residential. You also have existing water features here. We'd have to look a little bit deeper into this. And then also, there's a proposed fire station in this area, and that might also impact some of the water utilities in that area as well. So one thing with the zoning, currently it's, as I said, general business and residential. The general business, if we did want to convert this into an arts and entertainment district, general business allows for buildings to be 75 feet tall, which would be a bit out of scale with what's currently there from the historic building standpoint, but also the general area. It might be a bit larger and some of the uses might be a bit incompatible with what the arts and entertainment district would focus on. So we were thinking of possibly looking at scales between one to three, one to three stories, which would be compatible with the buildings that are there, but also allowing additional redevelopment. Looking into examples of a variety of uses, retail, restaurant, residential, arts-oriented, light industrial, things of that nature. Adding bike and pedestrian amenities, looking at water and sewer capacity, as I had mentioned earlier, with the green space, passive parks. And then also looking at public art in this particular area, which would enhance the monument that's already there. Oops, sorry. Enhance the monument that's already there and make it a much more interesting district. Future land use. So as we had discussed, the comprehensive plan was just finished up, and these were some of the recommendations and strategies directly from the comprehensive plan. And the staff and I have been working on action items specifically with these. I won't read each and every one of these, but protect historic properties. We've met with the National Register District Staff Representatives, and I provided some copies of what National Register entails and what the difference is between National Register and a local historic district, just for your information. Historic property should be maintained. We have looked into design district options and overlay options that we could provide. New development in the area should be in scale. That also goes into design guidelines that could be reviewed as part of redevelopment. Pedestrian access and open space, proposing open space that we discussed that Clayton County owns right now and maybe some other options. Linkages to regional green space. We've looked into different linkages. We've also worked with your Parks and Recreation staff to determine what options are here. If you look at the pink area right in the middle that's within the study area, there's a very large park to the west of that study area, and that's only .31 miles from the study area. So that could also be a great linkage to a large green space that you already have. And generally, in your vision and recommendations, we're going to want to create a connected, resilient, vibrant, arts and entertainment-focused and authentic district which celebrates the unique history and natural resources of Rex Mill. So that's our general vision. But to get there, there's a number of things that we got to look into. So incentives, there may be opportunities to develop incentives for redevelopment with your Economic Development Group and also through that National Register designation for tax incentives. Looking at our future land use map to update some of our mixed-use categories to include types of residential that might feed into that district. Amend residential property along the creek from residential to green space. That's the property that I showed that Clayton County currently owns. Utilize Clayton County land near the creek for passive parks and trails. Identify potential allowed uses for zoning. Explore a local historic or overlay district. Explore bike and pet connections and then create a plan to do so. Explore a public art plan for that particular area. Again, pursue a new National Register district. When we spoke with the National Register representative, that district recommendation is very, a district designation is very old from 1979, and they said if we wanted to include the additional buildings, we would need to expand, instead of expanding, it would be an entirely new district. But she was very supportive, and she actually knew the property that we were talking about. So that was super encouraging for us. And then engagement, obviously, we'd need to engage with the property owners in that particular study area, see what their thoughts are about their property and what they think about the proposed changes, as well as talking about Clayton County as a community and your community members and stakeholders. And then explore water, sewer, and other utility capacity in the area. So there's a lot of recommendations, a lot of things to look at, but I think that's where we can move forward to determine if this is going to be something that's viable. But I'm very excited about it. I think it's an area that's ripe with potential and has, and has a lot of things that could bring people into Clayton County. Enhance the experience of the residents, but also bring tourists into our particular area. Always say that historic tourists spend more money and stay longer when they come places. So, again, my name's Carrie Stevens, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. We'll start off with District One. Do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. That was an incredible presentation. I hope that everyone across Clayton County is appreciating the historical significance of Rex Mill, the community development team. They know how much I love talking about this area because we have our own little piece of history. I think my only question, in addition to the recommendations that, that you, that you had, I know you had mentioned some of the items that, you know, would go through planning and zoning and also through economic development. But as far as next steps from the, from the Board of Commissioners for... for, for the Rex Mill area, for that National Registry District, and forgive me if it's not the correct terminology, the board would need to potentially create a county historical preservation board, is that?
There's two things.
Yes.
So, and I think the, I think Patrick passed out the documents to you. So there's two things. There's the National Register of Historic Places. And that's the Rex Mill Building is listed on that from nineteen seventy-nine. Then there's your local historic district. So just understand that on the National Register, that provides a designation. It provides the opportunity for owners of those buildings to get tax incentives and other technical assistance. But that does not protect the building from being torn down. So at any time, anyone who owns that particular property could tear the building down. It is not a local protection. So the other side of it is if you have a local historic district, then that's a local protection. And then you would have a Historic Preservation Commission would then provide guidelines. And then they would have the authority to approve or deny demolitions. And they would have guidelines to determine whether that was an appropriate action or not. And it wouldn't just be likely if you looked into it. You may want to just look into, you know, the historic mill building, but then look at the area that surrounds that mill building. So it's two things. And, and they're both very important, but they both do two different things, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I just want to, so you said the next step would for us to be to create the local historic district in addition to getting on the National Registry. That's the next steps.
Well, we could do, there's a number of ways to do it and defer to the staff here. So there's the, there's the National Register District that we can move forward with. But we do, that does require that we talk with the property owners because they do have to agree to do that. And explain to them and educate them what it means and what it doesn't. But then there's also a zoning rewrite, and I'm not sure exactly what the, where we are with that process right now is. But the zoning rewrite will likely be something where we'll look into updating the zoning. So I don't know what, where we are as far as that is and how we want to structure that.
Good evening. Madam Chair and Commissioners. The plan is if you green light this idea, just by saying it's a good idea, move forward. Then we will create an overlay for the, for the historic district. Then we'll start doing all the groundwork, do all the necessary. That has to do with the land use, the zoning, we'll start changing all that to create it. So we have to have that package ready when we are applying for, for the national, which is the most, I'll say powerful, which is the, the one that is the most significant one. Then we do that and we have to do all the one-on-one with the property owners, explaining what that means and some of the benefits in, in being classified. That's a historic area. Sometimes you might get grants to fix up your property. It depends what funds that are available. So we'll go through all that. But what we are hoping this evening to say, staff, move forward. Then if you guys sit there, then we start building it at some point. Before we do anything else, we got to come back to the work session, show it to you again where we are and before we actually put it on agenda for the board to designate that as a historic area before we start applying.
Any other questions?
I also want to say the property owners are going to be the ones we really need to get with.
Yes.
Because they're the ones who determine, because we've looked at that area long before now and talked about making it a historic, a arts district and some other things. It's a beautiful area. The, the, you will see a sign when you go over there that says beware of the snakes. And I know Dietrich knows about those snakes because he's, so there, there was a big snake infestation back there as well. So I just want to let you all know. But the property is awesome. I think they would do, when we used to go back there, we would, they would be doing movies for like The Walking Dead and things of that nature. So that area really needs to be revitalized. And so I, you know, I'm just helping out the property owners if you're listening. We really need you to help us push that area to just be revitalized and beautiful again. It is beautiful. The old buildings are awesome and things of that nature. But again, we just need all of us working together in support of the owners.
Any other questions, District?
Yes. How much involvement will we get, or will we get any from A R C?
Well, I, we, we started the, well, no, I'm just kidding. So I'll say this, we started the pilot program in October of last year. So you're our first community. I, I identified that we had a lot of work to, we've done a lot of work with you. You've moved a lot of things forward and we wanted to continue your efforts and help. So we first started out the pilot program for six months and I've just extended it throughout the end of the year. And maybe we can work more together to see if we can get these things moving forward. So I'm, I'm dedicated to, you know, getting this moving forward and, and helping out the team. So.
Commissioners?
Yes.
This is part of the benefits of when we announced to the metro, we are interested in planning. The moment we started moving Clayton County forward, invited all the folks we invited to the county. A R C kind of recognized what we were doing. And all the original plan, some of the smaller planning agencies have been helping us. So K requirement towards was God sent. Because we couldn't, we don't have the staff. So, and she have, like, like she said, extended her stay in the county to do these projects till the end of the year. We don't want to walk her to death. We want to get as much as we can out of, out of her. So the whole idea is as we showing progress and she reporting back to A R C, my hope is that that cooperation will continue.
Right. And that's great. That's great. And I would like to say this footnote, good luck with that. I was here when we did the monument.
Yes.
So, good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank the A R C. You all have been doing great work with us. And we're going to continue to bring you all on in so we can get the county moving forward. And I would like for you all to continue to come in and do these updates so everybody can know where we're going as a county and what we're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're happy, I'm in the Community Development Department, but we have all of our partners in transportation and aging. And we want, you know, at any time, if there's something that you're interested or need more information in, if it's not something that I can assist with, and I usually can find somebody who can. So happy to be that conduit between A R C and Clayton County. We know you're doing a lot of good work and, and it, it spreads everybody a little thin. So, so we're happy to be of assistance in any way we can. So.
And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for E G A staff. But does this extend or will it contain any of what Eretropolis is doing?
With our trails?
Or maybe C I D or whatever? Will any of that interact?
Yes, ma'am. This is a coordinated effort.
Okay.
With all the local planning agencies. We are working with Eretropolis. We are in the Eretropolis collective. We have a Tara Boulevard tax force. So there's a lot of things happening that we're working on. So seem like everybody trying to get us where we want to get to.
I wasn't sure if it extended.
Yes.
Till that part. Great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for helping us move forward.
Next is going to be N A C O and that will be presented by Ms. Erica Rocker.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The Chairwoman Anderson Henry asked me to give a recap of our recent N A C O conference, which is a legislative conference held every February and March. And so it's just so fascinating. I just thought I'd just put together a collage of everything that I saw there. And there's certainly so much more, but this is just for your interest and information.
Can I say something before?
Yes, please.
I want, I want Ms. Rocker to, we, we were collaborating when we were there. And we saw some very good, some very good ways to save the county money. As well as we saw, we were in many of the legislative sessions and the COO was there as well.
Yes.
And so as we talked about some of the things that would be beneficial for the county, there was a day also where our directors could come in and talk with the people from the federal level and find out what we could, they could provide for this county. And so we want, next year, we want, kind of want those directors who, and not this next year. There's going to be another one in July in Philadelphia. And so that's going, that's, that will be a way where our directors can find out what's going on at the federal level, what grants are out there, what, what things are out there that would be beneficial to move our county forward. So I asked Ms. Rocker to give this presentation today because I really want, as we become transparent and let people know what's going on, when we go to these different legislative conferences, this recap will allow us and allow you all as citizens to know where we're going, how we need to get there and what these legislative conferences offer us as a county. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and definitely there's something that pertains to every facet of county operations. So you can find your niche and attend some of that. So again, I said, we're the Office of Economic Development and it's important for us to go as a registrant because full circle, we touch and interface with every aspect of the county. When promoting the county, when troubleshooting, when marketing and building partnerships. So it's just important for us to know how other, what resources are out there and available for our other fellow departments. So the legislative conference is every year and it's February to March timeframe. It's always held in Washington, D.C. And basically the national conference is every summer and it's somewhere. This year it's in Philadelphia. But this is a recap of legislative. So who attends? A conference overview and then some benefits of attending is what I'll be talking about real quick. So who attends? Our county leaders, our county COO attends as well as, I've seen Commissioners there, Commissioner Davis, Chairwoman Anderson Henry was there. Officials, you don't have to be an elected official to attend, but there is a plethora largely of elected officials from around the country. Department heads are there from all fifty states. Lobbyists and some federal offices are there, which is great because you're not just sending, if you need to interface with them, an email from Clayton County. You can actually meet with the, the live person at those offices while you're in Washington. I grabbed this slide from one of the opening sessions I attended because this, in working in county government as employees, it's, you get a lot of information at this conference on county operations and overall in the country, what we're doing collectively. So this graph is just a quick summation of the total county expenditures by category. And this is based on all counties within N A C O, which stands for National Association of County Officials. And it just goes to show that the bulk of county funds nationwide is spent on health and human services, then the justice and public safety, education, transportation, utilities, administration, administrative, and then public amenities, and then housing and community development. So sometimes you feel like you're an anomaly in your county, but all, all of us across the lower forty-eight and so forth are really facing some of the same things. This was another graphic, again, trying to sum up the conference in a couple of maps. This showed in G B, G D P, the growth. So everything you see that's in a blue color is, is more prosperous or up in productivity, up in growth and thriving. And anything in that burnt orange and that color has been losing. They either lost jobs, lost factories, lost people. We all know, it's no secret, everybody is moving to the southeast, namely Metro Atlanta and Georgia. But we have a very healthy area in that metro area. You can see about where Clayton is, but we are there along with others. So some interesting topics I just want to mention right off. I can't go into robust detail, but I have flyers. And so each department that this pertains to, I will definitely be forwarding that to you. But I learned of a program called N A C O Edge, which basically is cost-cutting solutions by harnessing the purchasing power. There are three thousand sixty-nine counties in the U.S. That equals about a three-point-six million person workforce. And we're so mighty when we come together and through this N A C O Edge program, everything is negotiated. They deliver cost-cutting solutions per this flyer. Everything from procurement to pharmacy, to mental health programs, to life insurance policies. The good thing about Edge is it's owned by N A C O and it's advised by county leaders. And so these are people who work in county government and they advise it. So they drink the Kool-Aid, they know what it's all about. Here are some other topics that I found very interesting. There's Cash Vests, Savvy, Mental Health Pharmacy, like I just told you about before. Cash Vests would be something more that are, again, are created by county executives and managed by them. But it is a brilliant concept where governments can save money or gain money based on their current deposits of what they do anyway. And there's robust flyers all about it, so I'm not going to be the expert to talk about it. But just, that's one that was very, that stuck in my hide, my mind. Storm Sewer Management, Wastewater Disposal Grant and Loan Program. It was shocking that whatever the issue is, there is some inroad on some page forty-seven of some document that can solve it, give you the funding for it, give you technical assistance for it. There was talk in one session I attended on opioid settlement funds and how you can use them and what they can be used for. Community Facility Direct Loan and Grant Program. Funds were just too many for me to mention, but here are some of the things that money can be used for. Police stations, town halls, airport hangars, prisons, vehicles, fire trucks, hospitals, clinics, nursing homes, childcare centers and more. Some of those key takeaways that they mentioned, remember when I told you lobbyists attend this as well, is that counties are built by bonds and it's important to know that from a historical standpoint. And to protect the tax exempt status of municipal bonds is one of the missions that N A C O is behind. And so as county leaders, we should be aware of that so that we can state what we'd like our lobbyists and others to focus on, our delegations. The County Finance Authority, which talks, governs how counties are permitted to raise revenue. Most states, up to thirty-four of our states, impose restrictions on counties to raise revenue. Georgia does not. Georgia has a no restriction policy on that, which makes us interesting as the number one state for business. Opioid Settlement Funds, I don't know if we ever applied for any or, or got any through Board of Health or Mental Health or wherever that would fall. But creating facilities, increasing beds and adding programs are just ways to address and make your county whole. And then law enforcement, second chance programs. Programs for the jails and recidivism and policing support were just really full when I went to the vendor fair from public agencies. I couldn't upload the pictures that I took in the vendor fair, but just rest assured, everybody from Department of Agriculture to EPA to Small Business Administration, cybersecurity and other things. But as a closing slide, there are resources for developing your strategic plans that work. It's National County Government Month, I believe that's coming up in May. And then how to ensure new cyber regulations that do not impede service delivery. Jesus is some interesting topics as I tried to round out all twenty-six departments or divisions that we have. But there were great things also from H R, like when you are hiring or recruiting, there's executive recruitment services, things that you may, you know, pay an exorbitant amount to a consultant. You can partner with N A C O at a very, you know, conservative rate and get some of that done. So I do believe that is all my slides, but I'm happy to share these flyers with our departments. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board.
I also want to reiterate, also, I'll come to you, Commissioner. I also want to reiterate, there is a day that we can go up on Capitol Hill. And so that, that day is usually on a Tuesday. So I told COO that we may have to move the board meeting back to that Thursday of that week when we go up because we're able to go see our congressmen and women and our senators as well. And we can go in and take our legislative priorities and let them. And we can go in and take our legislative priorities and let them know what we need as a county. So that is a great time for the board to, uh, come along and speak with our led, with our legis, excuse me, our congressman and our senators up there in Washington, D.C. And Commissioner, you ready?
Oh, no.
Not that you have a question.
I, I was just saying, what a great, uh, presentation, short, and then you started talking.
I know. Yes, I tried to keep it very short. You're welcome, Commissioner Hambrich. And just want to remind the board, we are having our bus tour tomorrow, so if you can't join us on it, I have all the R S V Ps, but please join us for lunch at twelve-thirty if you can, and we'll send out that address. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time? I'm gonna look to the left, look to my right, okay? All right, next is the Board of Health.
Good evening.
How are you?
Uh, Madam Chair, great, thank you. Vice Chair Commissioners, my name is Catherine Monroe. I am serving as the Interim District Health Director for the Clayton County Health District. I'm here to share with you about a very meaningful partnership that we have entered into with Positive Impact Health Centers. And I have Larry Lehman here, who is the COO of Positive Impact. Um, we have, um, among many other programs and services within the Health District, um, an HIV treatment clinic. That clinic serves, uh, citizens of Clayton County and, and others as well. And we have a roughly a patient census of about three hundred. Um, and we are looking to expand that and grow those services so that we can offer those to more individuals. Most of the funding for our program comes from federal grants. Those are Ryan White Grants you may have heard of in the past. Um, and Positive Impact is funded by those grants, uh, among other sources. One of the things that we're so excited about is that with Positive Impact, being able to come in and deliver those services within the Health Department, our citizens will be able to access many more wraparound services uh, that will serve them and assist them in managing their disease process. So whether that's, um, nutrition services or housing services, uh, those things that help them stay in care and even get to care, so transportation assistance. Um, Positive Impact has many more resources available than what the Health District has been having for the last many years and will allow us to grow our program significantly. I've actually had experience doing this prior in Cobb and Douglas Counties, um, where we transitioned the HIV care program to Positive Impact, um, in twenty-nineteen, so about six years ago. And as a testament to that, um, that's, patient census grew from about six to seven hundred clients being served in Marietta to over fifteen hundred today. And they have one of the highest viral suppression rates in the state. Um, and viral suppression means that the patient's viral loads are low enough that they can maintain a healthy life and that they won't transmit the disease to others. And so we have entered into a business agreement with Positive Impact. Uh, we are working on a sublease agreement now. Um, as you may know, we are located at eleven-seventeen Battle Creek. That's a very large building. It's about two-hundred thousand square feet, and the Health District occupies about a hundred thousand. And we're looking at subleasing about six thousand square feet where the, um, clinic currently is. Um, and all current staff will also transition to Positive Impact employment. And they're all aware of this. We've been very transparent about this, um, process. And so I am here to answer any questions you might have, and Larry can do the same.
Board members, are there any questions at this time?
I do have one.
No, I, I just want to ask, um, Catherine, is that with a K or a C?
With a C.
Okay, and I need contact information because we've been trying so hard to get somebody in charge, uh, after the previous person
That's me.
left or whatever. So
Yes.
Do you have contact information?
I'll be, I'll be happy to share that. The Chairwoman does have that. Um, I don't actually have a business card, but we're working on that too.
Okay, so you're gonna share it with the Chairwoman?
Yes, I certainly will. She has it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I just want, I just want to make sure and clarify. Did you say that the employees from the Public Health will become employees of the Impact?
Positive Impact Health Centers, yes. And then Positive Impact will also add additional staff to round out the program and help grow it, along with their leadership.
So my question becomes then, in a sense, is Clayton County's Public Health Department going away? Or what's happening here with it?
No, so the Health Department will still exist in the same location administering many other programs and services that you're accustomed to. You know, we have environmental health and emergency preparedness. We have other clinical services. It's just the HIV Treatment Clinic that we are transitioning services to Positive Impact. And as you may see in the, um, handout that you have, uh, Positive Impact has been in the, uh, Atlanta Metro Community delivering HIV services for many, many years. Uh, and they have, uh, made themselves experts at it. Where, so whereas the Health Department does many, many different things, Positive Impact really has become an expert in this space. And so we're very glad to bring them in and have them help us grow that program. Uh, Larry told me just earlier today that there are between three and four hundred clients with Clayton County addresses currently accessing their services into Cab County. We'd like to bring those people back home to deli, to get services here.
Which... Okay, um, okay, so you all state agency, is that correct?
Well, that gets tricky. So I, I happen to be a Department of Public Health employee, so I'm a state employee. Um, but the Clayton County Health District is its own business unit and has employees of its own, yes.
Okay, so now does that building that you're in service only Clayton County or some of the surrounding counties?
There are some spaces in that building that I'm not entirely certain of the use of that are used by other members of Clayton County. Um, and we occupy the one-hundred thousand square feet that I mentioned, which includes some warehousing space as well that we use, um, but that is a county-owned building.
Right, I know about the building, but I'm, but you all, as far as public health, do you just handle, are you regional?
We are the Clayton County Health District, so single county,
Okay.
single location. And that is actually unique in the state of Georgia. Many, uh, Georgia health districts are multiple counties.
Right. Great, thank you. That's what I needed.
So I have a question. So would they be subleasing for us, or is there, uh, a payment? What, how would they go?
There will be lease payments. There, I'm working with Mr. Reed on that sublease agreement now. Um, there is a current lease that exists between the Board of Commissioners, the State Properties Commission, and the Department of Public Health. And that is how we occupy that space and deliver services in that space. And then we will sublet a portion of the building to Positive Impact to allow them to deliver services. And the initial rent amount that has been proposed has been thirty thousand dollars per year, and that is negotiable.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because that's, that definitely has to be negotiable, because, um, what would be the appropriate, um, rental rate for that square footage? Because you said six thousand square feet, correct?
That's a rough estimate. We'll get something more precise.
I, I want to know what would be the appropriate rental rate, um, Mr. Reed?
I can find, um, uh, I can get our, um, get our real estate, um, agent to take a look at what would be a range of items. I mean, I think there would probably be somewhere from nine to, um, fifty. She's given some like ranges, um, with the average being around twenty-two dollars per square foot.
Okay.
But, um, but that would also depend on kind of like the location of where it is and those type of things.
Okay, all right. Board members, are there any other questions at this time?
No.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And once we find out, once we talk to our real estate agent and find out what the, um, square footage is and the rental rate for that, then we will let you all know. Because thirty thousand dollars, I mean, that's a, it's a little low. So I want to make sure we're getting, uh, what we deserve.
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thanks for your incredible work.
Thank you. All right. Board members, are there any other questions at this time? All right, well, I guess this meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful night.